Thank you. We're back on the record in the independent cab matter. The issue during the break was whether or not the amended pro forma prepared by by the applicant was provided to the interveners. I will give, I will make my record and then I will let anybody correct me or amplify if they wish. It is not transparent to the board what is or isn't given in discovery. We did receive a copy of it. It is in the publicly available binders that are here in the hearing room. And copies of the amended pro forma are going to be provided to counsel for the interveners. By way of mitigating to the extent possible any prejudice to the interveners from having not been provided documents. They will proceed on examination, Mr. Carson, on matters unrelated to the amended pro forma or other impacts it might have on examination. And Mr. Carson will stand for examination on those issues tomorrow so that they have time to review the examination that we should make on that. And also any preparation they need to make of their witnesses with the changes in the projections.
Anybody want to clarify how I have recorded state of affairs?
If I may?
Yes.
Mark Crafton on behalf of Little C and Henderson Taxi. I want to just clarify that we did not know about this amended pro forma until the hearings started. And it's, it's my understanding that the amended pro forma was not distributed to the interveners before this hearing. So today is the first time we could have been aware of it. I am in support of the chairman's recommended approach. However, I don't know what I don't know. So I'd like to reserve my right to, after I've had the chance and opportunity to review the amended pro forma with my client, I'm just going to reserve my right for any remedy from that point forward. With that reservation in place, I'm optimistic that we can pick up and proceed tomorrow. And I'll do everything I can to make that happen. With the disclaimer of that reservation.
Mr. Winner, do you want to further amplify, clarify, or correct me?
Maybe all three. I understand your ruling.
It'll be my first time.
I understand your ruling as I believe I do. It wasn't until this afternoon, we learned about this amended pro forma. And much of, much criticism of this application has been on the business plan, the business side. I object to you considering. I know you have it. I don't think you read it. I don't know. I think if you're considering something that was applicant's responsibility, if he submits some evidence that he gave it to us, he did not. That's all I have.
I will join in their sentiments as well. With regard to Mr. Crafton as well as Mr. Winters. And I think it's again, it goes to this or its previous order with regard to the disclosure of information. And I believe that this is in violation of that. And so I would hope for it to be straight. And to the and to the extent.
You want to make, you want, I'm going to allow you to reserve on this. You can make a motion to strike now if you wish. I'm going to let you reserve on it.
If I can reserve the motion to strike, that's, that's all I have an opportunity to look at.
That's the better part of value. You should read the document before you decide whether you want to strike. Before we proceed, Administrator, will you raise your hand? Do you swear that testimony you're about to give before this, before the Tax Cab Authority Board of the State of Nevada will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Does it have to be a right hand?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It can be one.
It's got to be both hands.
I'm a lefty, so.
And last time I looked, I'm licensed in the state of Nevada, so therefore I'm under those obligations too. So lying is not a good thing for me.
Administrator Armstrong, can you just put on the record the circumstances of the request? And what, if anything, the applicant was told?
Basically, what had happened was that since the application, this application was done in 2019. So to a certain extent, the information that was contained there was old. So I basically reached out to the applicant and stated, do you want to submit additional information relative to that noted updated? So that when we do our review of the application in terms of making determinations of whether it's correct or incorrect, that that information be included. We did not say whether or not he could or should or whatever the situation. We just gave him the opportunity to do such. He submitted that information to us. We reviewed that information. We provide reporting based upon that, but we made no statement to Mr. Carson in any way, shape, or fashion as to whether or not he should provide it to the interveners or anyone else. We basically stated that that information was for our review and the review of the board and making the determination reporting would be updated at that particular point in time. There has been no obligation by the administrator or the staff as to telling Mr., advising Mr. Carson as to what actions he should or should not take relative to the information contained there. And we put that information in the public book and made the determination in terms of at that particular point. But my belief is that it would be on Mr. Carson to provide the information to you based upon discovery orders. Understand, we had no information relative to discovery that you guys were doing. We had no idea what was changed, not exchange what the situation was. We just asked for the information in order to make sure our record was complete in terms of providing the information to the board relative to this hearing.
Does anybody want to add?
Administrator Armstrong?
Yeah.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
What was the date of receipt approximately?
I don't know. Darryl, you know when we received it? I don't know. Early July. Early July.
We'll obtain that date and put it on the record tomorrow. It's a, it's a record of the agency.
And the parties must understand also, information that came into us came in in different phases. It did not come in all at once. So to a certain extent, when the pro forma came in, it came in at one particular time. Additional information relative to background came in at a different time, those kinds of things. I want everyone to know that. So there isn't one specific date in which it came in. But I can only tell you that this particular point, it came in before this day.
Can I ask one clarifying question?
Sure.
Mister Administrator, you heard Mr. Carson describe the circumstances of how he submitted this supplemental pro forma to your office. Do you have any disagreement with how he characterized how that transpired?
Yes, I do.
And what?
Because, because there was been, there's been no information given by our office as to what he should do with this information. Bottom line is, we were not, we don't practice law and no do we tell anyone as to how they should proceed or not proceed. All we can ask is you give us the information and we will analyze it and give it to the board. That's all our, our role is. Also, our role is not to take a position one way or another as to whether or not the application should be approved or not approved. All we can do is tell you as to whether or not certain sections were met or not met in terms of the situation like that. But we believe and we understand that it is the board's responsibility to make the determination as to whether or not an application should be approved or not approved. We do not get into anything other than that.
Okay. And I, I thought Mr. Carson said to me when I was questioning him that somebody from your office advised him not to give it to us.
And that is, and that is, and I take, I take umbrage of that remark.
So you.
No one in my office did that.
Right, but you heard that also.
I was not happy when I heard it.
Thank you.
Any further examination? Thank you. Oh, yeah. Just follow up, all right, Mr. Armstrong.
If my understanding of what to do with the documents was contrary to your intentions, I offer my sincerest apologies. My understanding was to, when you requested updated financials, that financials were considered confidential.
Certain of them are confidential, but certain parts are not.
Is this testimony or an apology?
I think, I think it's a little bit of both. I think what the situation is, is that when certain of the materials pursuant to statute are considered confidential, certain of the materials, including the performer, as you saw in the books, a lot of those things were not redacted. So those materials that were public documents weren't documents that would have to be provided to the public and, and anyone that wanted to participate in this hearing. That is the situation. Other things that are your, like your specific financial, like for example, information dealing with your bank accounts and the image. That would be confidential information and we would not provide that to anyone but the board.
Okay, maybe I can bypass some of this stuff because I clearly misunderstood the meaning of submitting the financial documents. The documents that you have in the public book are for internal use only. Those were my ideas using criticisms and suggestions of staff. They were completed after the discovery cutoff, were not provided. And again, maybe go forward without it. I mean, they were done for my benefit. That was it. I didn't care if they're a part of this record or not. I'm just saying that.
They are. I'm not going to make a ruling on whether they will be considered or not considered. I'm going to let the parties, the interveners examine on it if they want to examine on it. I, I do understand what you're saying. But I, but I am also going to say the staff used that document in producing reports, confidential reports to us. Correct, Administrator?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and if that report was used in their opinions, they're entitled to it 100%. I agree with that. But like I said, they were done basically for the benefit of us.
And, you know, they're not in, I'm just for the record, you're not entitled to see the confidential advice we received from staff. But I do believe you're entitled as to a non, as to a public document to examine on that, to demonstrate to us what weight or credibility we might want to give to the amended pro forma to the extent it is referenced in a confidential report to us. So I think in fairness to the interveners, you do get to examine on this, even if Mr. Carson wanted to withdraw. So that's my rule. Anything else further on this before we go back on the record? I mean, we'll go back into examination. Great. Mister Kraft, you were cross-examining Mr. Carson. If you could continue to the extent you can.
I'm actually going to wrap it up for today. And if I have any further questions tomorrow, it would be related to the amended pro forma.
Thank you. Hello, Brendan Carson. On your brain. You, you, you seemed a little prickly describing the pro forma, not specific to that, just generally criticism about the pro forma by all George Balaban, Cheryl, you know, people in the industry. You, you took offense to the criticism. I understand that, right?
No, I mean, offense, I mean.
That's okay. How about this? You know George Balaban?
Of course.
Know him a long time.
Yes, sir.
What do you think of him as a businessman?
I think he is a very smart businessman.
Especially a businessman in the industry of taxicabs.
Agreed.
It might have been after you filed this application, but maybe before. You went over to see him, saw him out, and told him you wanted to do a cab company like this, 35 medallion, right?
Correct.
And he told you, this is a bad idea. You're going to lose money. Didn't he?
Not to my recollection.
You left that meeting believing you thought that was a good idea.
Yes, some background information. This, when I went and saw Mr. Balaban and I floated my idea of this, this was after the captain deal had closed. And he was selling his company to Captain.
Did close.
Right, but that was in November of 2019 is when the board voted to approve Captain buying Bell and Balaban companies. So after that, I went and met with him and I said, this is my idea. I was waiting until after your deal closed to file this.
Okay. Didn't Mr. Balaban try to talk you out of it, saying, this doesn't make any economic sense. You're going to lose money.
I don't remember that honestly.
That's, that's advice you would take though, wouldn't you?
I would heed it.
Sure, coming from him about a cab company?
Right.
Is there anybody you think more experienced and knowledgeable in the cab business than George Balaban?
Bell's pretty up there with the transportation. Those Checker Stars seem to be doing pretty good themselves. I would hate to pit two owners against it. I think everybody operates their business the way that they operate their business.
Okay.
To say one's better than the other.
I just, that wasn't my question. Do you think there's anybody more knowledgeable?
That would mean, that would be putting somebody above him.
And would you? No.
Not at this time.
I think Mister Crafton asked you a couple of questions about this. The 63 business transportation applications over the NTA.
Yes, sir.
63 presented to this board?
Correct.
And you had no idea how many were just one-vehicle operations?
That is correct.
But that's kind of primarily where he practices at the NTA, right?
Yeah.
Tell me, of those 63 businesses that were limousine or vehicle, a lot of shuttle little vans, how many of those did you handle as a lawyer?
Maybe 10.
Okay, still no idea how many were just one-vehicle operations?
There's 63 of them, no.
How about those 10?
Well, therein lies the problem is that it depends on what type of CPC and they were asking. They're asking for charter bus authority to run those Mercedes Sprinters around the strip and stuff like that. Then there is no limit as to the amount of vehicles that you can have. If you ask for a limousine, which is fully regulated, you have to put a number on it. So if somebody comes to me and says, I want to open up a party bus company and run Mercedes Sprinters. There you go. How many are you going to run? As many as I can. And there is, there is no regulation that says they can't.
But there is practical applications of money running the business. Those guys start off, they have one, right?
I don't know, because again, finances is not a requirement under T21.
Okay, how about your memory? Coming back to those 10, I mean, we're just for one, the ones that you handled.
You're always going to start at one, Bob.
Okay, so you answered my question.
Okay, you're going to start at one. But you know what? I'm not in a position to say they didn't start with two. I don't care when they do that.
Okay. You mentioned Las Vegas limousine. And I remember you had some pictures up there. And I thought the suggestion was that you already owned a facility and you had garages and lifts. Is that the impression you wanted to give the board?
No, it's just I have the options. There's options available to me.
This is the one that LVL, who's the other owner? Is it Boar?
Boar.
Boar. Okay, and he's the guy that runs it.
Right.
You talked about MTM Medical?
Yes, sir.
You think that's an untapped market?
Could be.
You know who they were? I think it was logistic here before. Didn't MTM buy them?
No, they won the bid.
They won a bid? The big federal thing. If, if MTM says, we want you to charge less than the rates, the tariffs, you think the cab company should go get that business?
Depending on if they want to help the community. I mean, I'm not here to run somebody else's business, but I mean, you bid and you put your price that you're willing to take to do that right. And they decide upon that. If you put in, say, I'm a taxicab company, I'm regulated by 706 and this authority, these are my rates. And if they want to call you, they call you.
You think that was done? Let's say just with respect to my client, Desert Cab.
Did he do it?
Yes. You don't know. Would it make sense to try?
I think anything makes sense.
Okay. You also talked about the statute serving the aged, elderly and financially. Does that go on now?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I mean, the cab companies, I know Desert Cab, they're doing that work all the time. What was the purpose of saying that this wasn't be done? You need to go after this.
I didn't say you need to go after it. I said it needs to be publicized. People got to know about it. The public, the elderly, the disabled.
Okay.
Let them know that there's options.
The LVL, Las Vegas limousine, that you're a half-owner with Boar, right?
Correct.
You said it's got unlimited authority and can manage many vehicles at once.
Yes, sir.
Did you consider doing that with your partner Boar? Saying, look at all this demand, let's go buy some vehicles, some vans, buses. You could do that, right?
Yes, we could.
Oh, you could?
Yeah.
But you haven't.
I mean, of course we have. I mean, we have 34 cars and seven charter buses.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, if we want to add more, we can.
When the demand makes economic sense.
Either demand or finances, it doesn't matter, one of the two.
Okay. I'm going to go back to your application. When you, when you filled out this application, which included a profile and a bunch of other exhibits, this wasn't your first time you've done many of these at the NTA. This is the first time for a cab company?
Correct.
Okay. But when you, you submitted this, you wanted the board and the tax cab authority to rely on it, right?
Well, if it's a reliance, they asked for it and we gave it to them. I don't see anywhere that it's a requirement under the statute.
To make, fill out an application.
Have a profitable or an accurate pro forma.
Well, I didn't ask about the pro forma. I'm just talking about the application.
Didn't you say pro forma?
I did, I just go, the application wanted to be accurate, right? And not talking about the pro forma, at least not yet, you want the information in there to be relied upon by the board, right?
Yes.
Your, your plan was to buy a bunch of Toyota Camrys or similar vehicle?
Yes.
And that's still the plan?
I don't know. I mean, again, it depends. If this board grants me the authority, I will make the best decisions at the time that they have, that I have. And if it's, if it's a similar vehicle, it's a Nissan Versus, a Chevy Equinox, I, I'm going to buy a cab. That's operational.
Look, we're similar vehicle. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But you want to be accurate, right? And that's your plan at least right now?
Yes. And I think the application says Toyota Camry or similar vehicle.
Yeah, I already said that.
Okay.
It was an October 23rd, 2019 letter from an insurance broker or something that you submitted saying that Mr. Arnold would be able to place insurance coverage before this new cab company meets the requirements of the Nevada law, words like that, right?
Yes, sir.
And was it Ms. Martinez that you spoke to there?
Johnny Lace.
Johnny Lace. Okay. Now, when you spoke to him, how much information did you give about the business plan, what you're going to do and what you want?
I said, can I get a quote based upon 35 vehicles, 35 medallions and type of vehicle?
Okay, and he provided it to you?
Yes, sir.
The rate he provided you, it's your understanding that's first dollar coverage, right?
It was at the time. I don't know if it is now. I mean, I, at the time that I submitted that, it was my belief it was.
You know what an SIR is?
Of course.
Self-insured retention. It's kind of like a deductible. For example, if Desert Cab, it's, somebody sues them because of an injury or whatever, he has to pay the first 25 grand or the insurance kicks in. You understand that?
Well.
Okay. You think you can get insurance coverage for liability only at the rate that was quoted by Johnny Lace?
Say that again?
The rate you submitted in your application is what was quoted to you by Johnny Lace, right? And you believe there's no SIR to that is first dollar coverage?
Right.
That's what you believe?
Yes.
The plan you submitted, buying these, these vehicles, they included a down payment, right?
Yes, sir.
And then a note to pay the vehicles back, right?
Yes.
The collateral would be the vehicles, right?
Possibly.
And you, is there any other collateral you can think of?
Personal guarantee.
Okay. The after you get a cab or a car and you turn it into a cab, you start putting holes all over the body. The tops for the lights, for the meter, the credit card thing, you start changing the newness of the cab or the car, right?
Yes.
That's something you know you have to do. Do you believe in a, an estimate of 20% down in the bank going on 80% loan is realistic for having the cabs, cars turned into cabs? The value of a car turned into a cab drops substantially. Would you agree?
On the market?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But to the right person, I think it increases the value.
To another cab?
To a cab company.
Do you think the, the bank where you get the financing is going to require that you have additional insurance other than liability or like full coverage? Because the cabs get run over, broke all the time. Do you think they'll want to have full coverage?
I can't speak for them, but it would make sense to have a common inclusion.
Yeah, it makes sense.
I don't think when you say full coverage, I don't think I need to have MedPay, UIM, coverage on any of that stuff. So I think there are, there's common inclusion, I would imagine, would be something I would consider. But I don't have to. The loss is, all I need is liability.
I know. Wasn't this explained to you when you had that initial conversation with George Balaban saying, unless you buy these cars outright, this makes no business sense?
Sorry, I just don't remember the yes.
Okay.
If I need to buy them outright, I will.
I'm going to ask you about the under spark. On June 28th, 21, you submitted a letter to the administrator that included these letters from supposed drivers you had found. What you did, you submitted the original letters and then redacted the letters.
I think so. Just don't know about the date, but that sounds right.
If I'm reading it right. The letters written on Independent Cab Company Stationery, right, as the name at the top. And they're directed to the tax cab authority. Attention JD Decker, Administrator, in the interim. June 16th, 2021. Sound about right? And the date is printed on there. It wasn't filled out. The way you got these drivers, supposed drivers, was to give a bunch of these blank form letters to some acquaintances in the NTA industry and say, go get me guys that'll agree to this and sign these, right?
Yeah.
You don't know any of these people. You know some of them?
Yeah, I told you that. Yeah, I told you that.
You couldn't remember which ones, I think, maybe you remembered one name or two.
No, there's some, I mean, some of them are past current clients, and like I said before on my, in my testimony earlier, I would say, hey, you have a brother, a sister, a brother, a mother, anybody that wants to get involved in the industry, you know, this is something I'm planning on doing.
And but you really have no idea who these people are, except for a few?
Except for a few.
But the, the purpose of these, was there like sixty, um, or so? The purpose of these was to submit to the board and the taxicab authority that you could get drivers, wasn't that the purpose of this?
That I could get drivers? Well, I think, I think the purpose is that I have means to contact people, I don't know, because even on the letter, it just says, I'm not going to go to work for Str- or independent cab, I'm just gonna, I'm, if you get the license, hey, I got an interest, call me.
And then you redacted their phone number and their last name?
Yes, sir.
And the purpose of that was what?
So you wouldn't call them?
You know how many of these, uh, reported drivers were already driving for cab companies?
No, I don't.
You didn't make any effort to find out?
No, I didn't.
They would still have to, if they weren't any of these, these people, they'd still have to get the permit from the taxicab authority, right?
Yes.
So the vetting of these, uh, these people was nothing more than a bunch of different names who would sign this letter?
There was no vetting, so I would say that.
You remember in your deposition, we talked about, uh, the Reno cab case, about the Supreme Court?
Yes, sir.
After we chatted about that, would you, uh, go back and read it?
Yes.
Um, can we agree, um, on some of the holdings in that?
Don't think so. Because I don't know what your opinion is now.
Well, let's, let's see if we get there.
Okay.
Um, the holdings, it wasn't talking about, um, cab drivers that are independent contractors. The, the Supreme Court sent it back on that issue. The cab company said, these are independent contractors, so I don't have to guarantee minimum wage. And the Supreme Court sent it back, said, no, you have to apply this test, substantial factors.
Economic realities test.
Yes. And under the substantial factors test, is that you're understanding that independent contractors for cab companies in Nevada may be guaranteed minimum wage because of that test?
Again, I, my reading of Reno cab was that the Supreme Court looked at the individual lease agreements for these independent contractors. And in those independent lease contracts that they had, it said you have to work at least three days a week, you have to do at least this, you have, I mean, there was an element of control offered by the person, the lessor. So he said, under that model, you need, I'm remanding this back down, because I think it was summary judgment. So he remanded it back down and it said, on an individual basis, that you have to describe the facts on an individual basis, that's my reading and it's been a while.
Okay, well, I made some notes about the holding, the degree of the employer control and right to control the manner in which, um, the work is to be performed, that's one factor.
So I said.
Okay. Employee's opportunity for profit and loss depending on his skill, other factor. Employee, uh, investment in any equipment or materials, other factor. Service rendered, uh, required special skill. Degree of permanence of working relationship and whether service is an integral part of the employer's business.
Before you answer that question, last question you did not answer audibly.
Which one was it?
All of these are, I'll agree with whatever Mr. Winter's saying, are elements of this substantial economic reality test.
Well, and.
So I'm just, I need to respond to questions out of, because elsewise we can't use, we don't have a record. You just nod your head, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, we agree on that, though, right?
Yes, we do.
Um, can you understand that some people, maybe the Supreme Court might believe that even though we've complied with the independent contractor statutes of seven oh six, that you'd still have to pay minimum wage to those drivers?
I asked if that's your opinion, it certainly sounds sound.
It's something you'd like to know before getting into the cab industry, whether you're going to have to guarantee minimum wage to independent cockpit workers, which all your drivers are.
Well, I, I think that the industry and the cab drivers would learn that that pretty dang quick, if somebody comes and leases a cab for me, eight hundred bucks, and they're not making minimum wage, they can go down the street to Little C and get ten, twenty-five an hour, I, I mean, if they're losing money by driving as an independent contractor, they ain't going to stick around, and they'll have to adjust accordingly.
Oh, you forgot the, the second step in that, I, I get your point. But when a, an independent contractor goes out on the weekend and has a good day, but Tuesday, Wednesday, he didn't, you're paying the difference on minimum wage, get that?
I didn't get that, but.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you, you can let them go, they quit, but for the time they actually work, you, you're paying that minimum wage.
Why don't you guys actually have minimum books that people have to meet standards?
I think I'm asking questions now.
Okay.
And I know they used to, but I haven't been that close to it. You made several points in your direct testimony about safety, running a safe operation and, uh, making sure the traveling public is as safe as they can be, right?
Sounds right.
Something. I am paraphrasing. Um, do you think a, a drive cam, camera, security camera is important, safety aspect for a cab?
Yes.
Is that something that you, you're going to do?
Yes.
In addition to the cost of the camera, you're going to have to hire somebody to, to watch it, aren't you? And what good is the camera if you don't have?
The camera usually comes into effect after an incident happens.
They're always working.
So, I mean, listen, that's what I would say.
Okay, so until there is.
I'm not going to have somebody sitting in front of a screen watching thirty-five cameras twenty-four seven.
Good. Not even eight hours a day?
I mean, let me see, but how, how bad it goes, somebody calls me or I get a complaint saying, hey, this guy was, you know, I mean, long haul didn't happen as much, or this person, you know, I left my stuff in the car, or this guy would get, I'll go back and redo it. It's not hard, I'll be able to figure it out from a trip sheet, the time.
Did I understand your testimony right, uh, in your deposition? That, uh, you think two, um, dispatchers is adequate?
They testified to that.
That's what you listed, I think you, you said.
I had three, but, I mean, are we getting to the pro forma, is that what you want to get to?
Well, I wasn't going to do that.
My pro forma.
You totally changed it, now it's three?
I know, I, it's always been three.
Okay.
Except for, maybe now, I don't know, I can't remember the, the new ones.
At the de- at the deposition, you had thought that you or Claudia would be able to pick up the phone and answer it?
There are jobs that an owner can fill in for, yeah, I mean, it's your business.
Tell me this, um, do, do you have an understanding of the difference between a dispatcher for a limo company and a cab company?
Do I?
Yes.
Um, yes, there's bound to be some differences.
Okay. Do you know that a cab dispatcher has to watch the screen all the time to see where the cabs are, has to take all kinds of radio traffic and all kinds of calls, mainly much, much more than a limo company?
All right. I need to ask you this, and I apologize, can I, uh, you're getting into the pro forma, because in the, if you want to get asked those questions, yes, but in the other pro formas that I did, I based it upon having a call center with the company curb.
Well, then I will withdraw my question.
Okay, I just want to, don't want to, don't want to repeat, if you want to ask me about the first one, that's fine, but I'm giving you the opportunity to, to review the second one.
Okay, fair enough. About this in your deposition as well, um, could you explain to the board your understanding of the annual review of medallions by the taxicab authority?
I don't know what you want me to explain, I mean, it's, it's, it's a statute.
Okay, it's a statute.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's the law in Nevada that requires the board to look at the allocations in the industry every year, at least once.
Correct.
And then the board can, based on the evidence it receives at that hearing, make an allocation to all the cab companies that apply for additional medallions. Is that your understanding?
Quite agree with that, I think they can make allocations, but, all right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to look at seven oh six, eight eight, two, three, seven, which is the statute that you're referring to. And it says, under subsection six, the taxicab authority shall review annually, A, the existing allocation of taxi cabs, and B, the rates, charges or fares for the certificate holders in the jurisdiction. That is what they're required to do.
Well, and if they make an allocation, which is the next section, I believe, they allocate each, or is it the, the next, uh, statute? Could be the one above it.
Yeah, I see, temporary increase.
Is, is it your testimony, based on what I saw earlier today, that there's a need for additional allocation, and that's why we have this independent cab company proposed?
Yes.
Is it your understanding that the cab companies were allocated many medallions in over twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen?
I think, I would say probably about thirteen hundred.
About half, yeah?
Yeah.
And they, the, all the geographic and time restrictions were removed from all the other medallions.
Around five hundred and fourteen.
So you do know this?
I do.
Part of the purpose of that was so that the cab companies could operate their business when there's peaks and valleys, they wouldn't have to put them out when it's a slow day or a slow time of the year. But when you had an increase, a Super Bowl or expanded, something like that, they would have the medallions to meet the demand.
Um, well, I, I would agree with that statement to a certain extent.
Okay.
And let me just clarify that why.
You qualify, go ahead.
Thank you. Is that they always could come to the board and ask for a temporary increase. So I don't know if board was just sick of you guys coming in saying, hey, give me medallions at Super Bowl, or something like that. But there was always an opportunity for peaks and valleys, given the, given the scheme, the statute of scheme.
That's true, the temporary increase, they used to do that.
Right.
Haven't done that in a while. Can we agree that, uh, part of the law you put up there today said that, uh, you have to demonstrate that the existing carriers will not meet the needs?
What the law says.
Uh, but then it goes on, say, the needs in the territory for which the request is made, the application. So that your, your proposed service is pretty much the resort corridors, I see. You, you mentioned stuff out at Summerlin, I guess, the baseball park, you know, stuff way out there, but.
I've applied, I've applied for Clark County.
All of them. And you propose to have independent contractors, which you're not going to have any control, right, other than fill out your book, right, that kind of thing, you can't tell them where to go.
I can't tell them what to do, no, but I, I also clarified that numerous times, is that that's why I did my application. But if it transforms into an employee, employer relationship, then, you know, I'm not going to stand in the way of it. I mean, my understanding is you make more revenue as the employee employer.
It's harder to, uh, to fudge the, the trip sheet, isn't it, for you?
Well, you got to meet it.
I guess limos are worse.
Limos are cash business, it sucks.
Uh, Judge, I'm not sure, I've exhausted everything so much, it was.
I'm a long ways away from a judge, but thank you.
Now I'll stand and say, Your Honor, um, I don't have any questions at this time, I may have missed something, but, uh, we'll see.
Thank you. Um, great, how many CPCNs do you currently hold?
I think two.
Which, um, is that, have you ever had more than two CPCNs?
Yes.
How many, what's the most you've ever had in your time?
Three.
Three. Some amalgamation of the three switched out, reduced down to two, or have there been multiple changes within those three?
Um, no, um, let me explain it to you, I owned Strip Limousine, which was CPCN eleven thirty-one, that is in the process of being sold, but I am still the attorney of rec- or the, uh, owner of record, because it's, has not been adjudicated by the N T A yet. Um, in two thousand and twenty, we purchased two CPCNs from the freest companies. That was Las Vegas Limousines and Airline Shuttle. Airline Shuttle was a shuttle company, obviously by the name, and we sold that one this year.
You sold Airline Shuttle earlier this year?
Yes.
How long did you have Airline Shuttle CPCN?
From twenty twenty to a couple of months ago.
So less than two years? And then, um, is that a yes?
Yes.
Uh, Strip, uh, as far as Strip Limousine, when did you get that CPCN?
I believe it was two thousand seventeen.
And you, when did you enter into the sale for Strip Limousine?
Probably two thousand eighteen.
All right, so you purchased Strip Limousine and then sold it basically the next year?
Yes, sir.
And then in twenty twenty, you bought two CPCNs and you've already sold one of those?
Yes.
As far as under contract, although the sale hasn't been filed?
I think the sale's finalized.
Oh, it's the Strip Limousine that's not finalized?
Correct.
And when did you enter into the sale for Airline Shuttle? Like, what's the contract date approximately?
No idea, uh, it was this year, or, no, let me see what's. I mean, it just closed this year, so it probably would have been the year before it was the actual contract.
Sometime last year?
Yeah.
And you said, as far as Las Vegas Limousine, that basically Tony Boer does all the, did the operations?
Yes, sir.
And I think when your deposition, you said he does the bulk of the work for L V L, is that correct?
Yeah.
And your work primarily deals with the regulatory side of things and then reviewing contracts? And any other legal work?
Legal work, regulatory work, safety, you know, all that stuff, yeah.
Uh, was Claudia involved in the da- daily operations?
Claudia?
No. She involved in the finance on?
Yes.
So she's, uh, doing the finances for L V L?
Not doing it, she's reviewing them.
And earlier you testified that you had hundreds of, uh, contacts as well as former license drivers for the N T A as well as the T A.
Sure.
And as far as those drivers represented, that you represented, how many of those were citations before the N T A or the T A?
Out of hundreds? For citations? Um, usually, let me say this, usually I don't handle walk-in citations, um, if there's a dry. If there's a driver that receives a citation that I represent AWG or LBL or something like that, uh, the citation and investigative report comes to me.
So you don't normally represent the drivers or and?
If I don't know who they are, I usually I won't pick it up. I mean, I get calls for impounds and for, and I just don't do it. I mean, I don't have time.
And earlier you talked about, uh, how you believe that current CPCN holders are not meeting the needs of the community.
Yes, sir.
And you showed a bunch of things, and I'm not gonna highlight all the other cross, but as far as pictures of resorts world and Allegiant. You're aware of the traffic issues around Allegiant Stadium, correct?
Nightmare.
Having thirty five extra cats, they're at having thirty five taxi cabs to that area going to solve that problem?
That'd be thirty five more cabs than you see there right now.
Well, I don't think there's an event there right now.
I know. Well, go Friday then. There's zero.
You know how far the walking distance is from the uh, stadium to the taxi line? You know what the backlog is to get in and out of the stadium?
Nope.
And you you say that the taxi ridership or that we're not meeting, the current CPCN holders are not meeting the needs. However, the number of rides in twenty fourteen was twenty seven million. You aware of that statistic from the TA?
Sounds right.
Okay, following year twenty fifteen, slight decrease, uh, down to basically, you know, uh, twenty seven point six million approximately.
Second question?
But you're aware of that statistic?
I'm aware of statistics, yes.
Or are you aware of that statistic?
Not personally.
Alright.
I mean, I can look at your little poster board.
Alright, you're aware that you're aware that I, YOCS disclosed all taxi cab statistics from twenty two thousand four to the present?
You know, I.
Or should I say roughly about April of this year?
Well, I mean, I aware of what you did, and you disclosed them. But those numbers are wrong.
Oh, yeah, so those aren't the correct numbers, number of trips?
No.
Which ones wrong?
Twenty one, twenty, nineteen, eighteen.
And how are, what's what's wrong as far as the number of trips?
For its indulgence? Fair reasoner, may I go up to the poster board? Hey. What I have in my hand here is a copy of the statistics that were provided by Desert Cab.
Okay.
Industry trips for two thousand twenty one, eleven million, four hundred and thirty seven thousand, five hundred and eighty nine, meaning that number is incorrect. Two thousand and twenty, five million, two hundred and twenty six, three eighty seven. That number is wrong. Two thousand nineteen, fourteen million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, ninety four, wrong. Two thousand seventeen, nineteen thousand, nine forty six, nine forty eight, wrong.
Alright, so you're so you're aware of this, you're aware of how much the numbers have decreased since twenty fifteen?
I've seen that. I've seen the statistics, yes.
And so would you agree that the industry did twenty seven million, twenty seven million trips in twenty fifteen?
Yes, if that's what they say. I I have no reason to doubt. Well, I guess I do have reason to doubt. Go ahead. Show me, show me the backup information.
Alright, but you would agree that we're not, the industry is not doing anywhere near the number of trips that it did in twenty fifteen?
Right. Apparently, yes.
Same number of medallions?
No, because the medallions didn't get to you until the latter part of fifteen and sixteen.
So since twenty sixteen, we did, the industry did about twenty three million?
Yep. Well, let me check this. The number, what's that?
Twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, twenty three oh seven seven? Uh, twenty three oh five two five two. That number's wrong too.
But as far, so you did, according to statistics for twenty sixteen, there's twenty three million trips, right?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty one, there's eleven million.
Apparently.
And that's a decrease of approximately fifty five, sixty percent?
Okay.
And you want, it seems as though the industry is facing a decrease in ridership. Would that be fair to say?
Well, I mean, depends. Do you consider Uber and Lyft to be providing the exact same type of service as a taxi cab? Me, on the other hand, define a taxi cab as a person that picks somebody up, drops them off at a location, and receives money for it. Uber picks up somebody, drops them off at a location, and accepts money. I believe it's the same. I mean, they're offering the same type of services, and believe me, I've argued this to till till nobody listens anymore. I mean, they came in and got a sweetheart deal. But they're here. You gotta face it, live with it. I mean, but I think I think their numbers are gonna go down. That's why I'm here. I'm betting on it.
As far as your insurance, we're we're, President Bob asked you about the zero dollar coverage. Uh, did you ever contact the airport to determine whether their insurance requirements were?
Yeah.
Think that might be relevant in the operation of a taxi company?
Cross that bridge when I get there, but I do know that the state. Hold on, please be back in the chair so that. I do know that the state has a statute directly on point as to liability insurance.
Yes, and you understand that other businesses have other requirements, right?
Yes.
And you haven't looked into that?
I mean, you're saying any other business. I mean, I have insurance right now for, well, practice. I mean, other businesses have different types of policies. Are you asking about taxi cabs or businesses?
Taxi cabs.
Right, taxi cabs are governed by statute.
And you're aware that the airport could put additional requirements on the taxi cab company?
Good, but I'm not aware of it. You're telling me.
And you indicate that you're gonna operate about thirty five vehicles or so?
Sure.
And you believe that you'll just be able to get thirty five vehicles pretty quickly?
I would.
Have you contacted Auto Nation, the largest auto retailer in the country, to see what their availability is for vehicles?
Well, I have a fleet account with Chevy for my, uh, Las Vegas Limousines, and yes, I have talked to them. They have seventeen Chevy Equinoxes available for me whenever I pull the trigger.
Alright, where are the other seventeen, eighteen coming from?
Probably have to go door to door.
Are you aware that some businesses aren't selling fleets anymore?
Yes.
You're aware that certain, uh, internet sellers such as Room refuse to sell the businesses at all?
Never heard that, but you're saying it. I have no reason to doubt it.
And are you aware that, for example, Ford, basically, they're saying for twenty twenty three, a fleet's gonna get a total of sixteen vehicles next year?
Hey.
And have you checked into that?
No, like I said, I have personally checked into my fleet account, and he's got seventeen cars available, and I will go cherry pick the rest of them.
And I know that you was kind of already addressed, but you haven't, like, solicited a place or hired a broker to figure out where you're gonna put your property when you operate the business?
No.
Have you contacted them in the past two years?
Broker? No.
Or anyone to lease property?
Nope.
I reserve the right to question on the pro forma.
Mr. Carson, do you have any redirect?
Yes, sir. Chairman, will members be allowed to ask questions?
Yes.
Decker, you may examine Mr. Carson. Or if you want me to have Mr. Sotobrook go.
Yeah, 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 maybe, otherwise.
So, I'm ready to rock.
I am ready. Um, Mr. Carson, I'm a little confused, so just walk me through this. You've been an attorney practicing in Nevada regulated transportation for how long?
Over decades.
Okay, twenty years. And you applied for and obtained your first certificate from the NTA when?
Application probably started around two thousand fifteen.
And that was strip limousine?
Yes.
And how many vehicles? Did strip limousine have in?
Nine.
Nine. And then you sold that?
Correct.
Was it operational when you sold it?
Yeah, it's, it was operational, but it is in the process of selling. It has not been closed yet.
So it's not operational today?
Yes, it is.
So strip limousine has nine vehicles on the road?
Uh, eight.
Eight, okay.
With the nine, with the nine capacity.
Okay. And where is that based?
Oil Street. It's, so here's what happened, is that the buyers come in to the NTA, and they say, I'm buying this certificate from Brendan Claudia. They file an application, what's called a temporary transfer of operating authority, which gives them permission to have that certificate and operate. I have no operational involved into with it since that point in time. So while it is operating.
You're not operating.
They have it. They have, it's their employees, their insurance, their registration, their vehicles.
Their facility, okay. And then you had another, or you purchased another, uh, two. Okay, walk me through that.
Okay, so I believe it was probably two thousand eighteen, two thousand, probably two thousand eighteen, yeah, eighteen and nineteen, somewhere around there. The freest companies were liquidating their companies. They had limousine companies and taxi cab companies. Um, at that time, I approached John Mowbray and Jack Hanifin, the attorneys and stuff for the Freest Trust, and worked out a deal to buy two of Charlie Freias's old certificates. Those two certificates were Las Vegas Limousines and Airline Shuttle.
Airline Shuttle, okay. So those are the three certificates you've been involved in as an owner operator?
Yes, there's one right now. It's a bus license, so I I really don't consider it too much of a CPCN, because they're deregulated, is in the process of being transferred over into my name, into our name. But it's just under that temporary transfer of operating authority. It's not an ownership.
Okay, so as an attorney, over twenty years, you've either represented people or been the applicant a number of times?
Yes.
Now, in your PowerPoint, which is becoming an exhibit, you pointed out a number of things that you testified to uh, existing cab operators are not doing, that should be doing. But knowing your testimony, you told us what you were gonna do. Tell me what you are gonna do differently. Yeah, definitively. I don't wanna hear, maybe this, maybe that. Tell me what your plan is for this company and how it's gonna be different.
Well, it's a good question. Start off, it will depend upon a lot on the structure, the employee versus the lease cap structure of 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 everything. Um, my goal, my goal was always to submit the application as a lease only because that provided me with the definitive number of what I can get. So I'm setting my top. So if I say I'm getting eight hundred dollars a week for thirty five cars, I know that's the money I have to work with within the expenses for my budgeting. That was the easiest part.
David, I didn't hear, what part of that was inoperable? You filed the application as a what?
As a lease company.
A lease company, okay. I didn't hear that part.
I'm sorry. Versus the employee employer. I all along have said that I would like to develop it into the employee employer type of, uh, model. Um, that's what the industry has known up until two thousand and fifteen. And so coming in, it's easier. Then I would grow it into giving more shifts, utilizing the assets in a a more beneficial way. And at that point in time, that's where we're getting to. At that point in time, I'm the boss. And that's what I can start dictating, what I wanna do with my company. Mr. Winters pointed out that, you know, the leases, you you have no control over what they're going to do. You still have the same statutory rights, but you can't tell them, hey, go pick this person up at Bellagio. But.
I understand.
So when I would get there, then that's when it is. I mean, that's, that's when you start making the decisions as to what I, what wants to set me apart. And that would be the stuff that I described to you, you know, the stuff that means stuff. I mean, it's not the big money ticket, and it's tough, but we have, we have a right. I mean, I I I think, I think transportation is a public utility. I mean, people need to go somewhere. People need to go to the grocery store. They need to go to the doctors. They need to eat, stuff like that. I think it's a public utility, and that we cannot just dismiss the public. They are what makes Las Vegas, people that live here. They deserve some consideration too. And I just think there's, I mean, the growth, the, just, you know, with the the stations, stations alone is gonna block up every corner of this city. And we all know, I mean, you go to the, go to the Red Rock and sit by the pool, have a cocktail or something, you need a ride home, here, at least there should be something, an option available to them. You know, or, and then again, what I said, you know, is collecting a cancellation or a credit card on file or something like that. We can't keep running, chasing these people if we know that they're pitting us, pitting us against each other. So, once we develop the trust of Brett, come and pick me up, okay, you're, you're gonna put some skin in the game. Here's your credit card, and I picked that person up. I fulfilled their their needs, and I fulfilled their confidence. Now they're not gonna have a second problem calling me again, saying, come pick me up, because they know I've already done it before.
But you filed this application, and you're telling us that you anticipate it being a hundred percent leased drivers, but you hope it to be at some point a majority of employee drivers. Why wouldn't you just file this that if you're telling us that's the way to go?
I did it just because of personal, I mean, because I wanted to see what, because it's it's easy. I don't know what a cab generates on a road on a daily basis. I mean, I can go to your website, and I can say, average revenue per trip is nineteen dollars and thirty seven cents, and the average trip for medallions is fifteen per day. So I mean, I can kind of, kind of gather that. But when I said, okay, a lease, I know what that is. And I'm gonna say, okay, if I, if I lease this vehicle out for eight hundred dollars, times thirty five, times seven days a week, this is what I'm going to get. Then I can budget as to whether or not it gave me an idea of can I afford the cars? Would I be able to afford the insurance? Am I, you know, this was, it was just a preliminary. I I knew it was gonna be less profitable as a lease, but at least I knew what I had to work with as far as revenue. And that's the only reason, you know, that's it. It was just easier.
I don't wanna get into any of the pro formas that I may have seen that the other parties haven't seen, but I think it's common knowledge you're asking for thirty five, uh, medallions.
Yes, sir.
What is the minimum number of medallions you can get approval for and still have, and start your company?
Yeah, I'd have to provide another pro forma and get in trouble again. I haven't answered. I don't have that answer to that question. I I mean, I'll think about it tonight if that's okay with you.
And I I guess the last area, I mean, you filed this in two thousand nineteen. Uh, it appears from your answer to questions, you had the idea in the fall of nineteen, and you filed it in December. You were waiting for some threshold event to file.
Yes, sir.
Um, but we live in a completely different world economically. But we live in a completely different world economically today, as we speak, than we did in, in 2019. And you're in business, you're in a number of businesses. How has that changed your plans?
I don't think it's changed it. I, I'm, I'm, I'm absolute bullish on Las Vegas. I, I, I just see the exponential growth that's going to happen.
Well, I understand that. I don't, I don't need, I understand you are, I am, I am as well, but we're in a, we're in a situation now where gas prices are higher. The availability of used cars is, is almost nil. It's very hard to hire people. When you filed this, those, those things weren't happening. What, how's that change your plans, and how are you gonna deal with it? You had to have thought of that.
No, I didn't.
You run a business. You run other businesses. You don't just wander into it, but you're telling everybody you'll deal with it when it comes along. And I've given you an opportunity. Tell me, you've had to have thought about this. Tell me what you thought of. What are you gonna do?
I mean, very good. I mean, circumstances are always gonna change, and so we're gonna have to adapt no matter what. You know, starting with 2015 Uber and Lyft, we had to adapt to that. Starting in 2019, 2020, when COVID hit, we had to adapt to that. A lot of businesses closed. Everything was shut down. Everything was coming back. Now we have Ukraine war, gas prices, everything. There's always gonna be something. I mean, there always is, but you have to adapt to what is given to you at that very moment in time. And at this very moment in time, the, the demand is out there enough that my guys are gonna pick up people. They're gonna be happy. They're gonna be profitable, and I can't, I guess, get bogged down in, in, because tomorrow's gonna be something new, and I don't know what that is.
Well, I understand, and, and I, I don't mean to be argumentative with you, but if you receive a certificate from this agency, you're receiving it now. You're not receiving it eight months from now, which are different. So what is independent cab company gonna do to get the number of drivers it says it needs? What is independent cab company gonna do to get the number of cars it needs? And is that different from what the rest of the industry is doing? Do you know something they don't? Do you have? Or are you telling us that, once I get the certificate, I'll start to think about it? Because I think that's what you were telling everybody else, and I, I can't believe that. And so I'm giving you the opportunity to straighten that out.
All right, so let's talk about the vehicles. Now, my company, Las Vegas Limousine, currently has a fleet agreement with Chevy. I have contacted them and discussed possibility of getting licensed. This was, and they said, yes, we have, tell us when you wanna do that. Like, if you told me, right, you got your certificate, I could call the guy up on the phone and say, 17, chip him over. Well, that's it, you know, and then after that, like I told Mr. Gibson, is yeah, it's tough if you get out there, but it's not impossible. I can still go out and buy cars from dealerships. I can still go to, you know, LA. I can go to Salt Lake City. I mean, there are vehicles that are available. Used car market, tougher, people are holding on to it, stuff like that. But I mean, if you're looking at the newer models and stuff like that, I think, I mean, they're not gonna sell me a handful. They're gonna sell me one, and I'm gonna have to cherry pick, and it's not gonna be, you know, an overnight process. I mean, I can do 17 overnight. And at that point, then I'm gonna start, that's when I really need to, I already know that. So what am I gonna do to get those next 17? Is put my feet to the, feet to the ground. I'm gonna have to do that. Phone, butt, talk, all over, call in favors, whatever, I don't know. Whatever, whatever needs to be done. Because that's my, that, that.
But you're, if you're testifying that you have a commitment to get 17 vehicles immediately already?
Yes.
Okay.
And then employees, I, I, I think I tried to touch up on this, and I apologize if I didn't, is I have, I, I believe I have a network of pool drivers, whether they are limousine, taxi, or anything, people that I've known or know me. I've helped out hundreds of clients that have been transportation drivers. And they know me, they call me, and they'll say, hey, what's going on? And I will always say, hey, do you have a brother? Do you have a sister? What's your wife doing? You know, is she ready to get back to the workforce, or, you know, something like that? I have, I believe that I have a network strong enough to gather employees.
Okay, and so that's, that's what you're saying is the plan right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm pretty confident I could have more drivers than cars.
Hey, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I actually have more questions for the intervenors, but since they're not answering questions right now. Let me, so I, I gleaned from the testimony, I think it was Mr. Gibson, said that you had a conversation with Mr. Balaban that you don't remember, which is unfortunate, because apparently in that conversation, Mr. Balaban told you that 35 medallions would not be enough to be profitable. First question I would have asked him, if I were in your shoes, would have been, how many? And that's how many I will ask for in my application. So unfortunately, if you don't remember that conversation, never know the answer to that question. So let me just ask you, why 35 medallions?
Truthfully, this was an arbitrary number based upon 3,530 medallions. It was less than 1%.
All right. So a question was asked before that I want to kind of relate to. Are you concerned about the obligations you have to your law, law firm, and your limo company, and a startup have been a business in the event that you were issued the medallions? And I think someone asked you why not expand the limo business as opposed to starting a new company? What, what? Maybe I'm not familiar with the differences between, maybe they're not alternatives related to each other, but starting a cab company with 35 medallions versus expanding an existing limo business? Is that something you've considered, and why did you choose the application to the TA?
That's fine. A little bit of, can I preface that with some background?
Sure.
Okay. Back when in winter, we're partners, represented Ray Chenoweth. He was the owner of Nellows Cab and Ambassador Limousine, which was an unlimited certificate. And he would complain on a daily basis. Limousine drivers, it's a cash business. They get first count. I don't know what they're charging. And he said, I think, Bob, he said, if you give me 25 more medallions, I'll give you my unlimited certificate. That's how much difference it is. I mean, you're dealing with meter, you know what you're collecting, you know what the, what you're gonna collect at the end of the day, and you know it isn't gonna deviate from what the meter has. It's measured by mile. Limousines are tariffs, which are hourly tariffs, and you have to charge that amount no matter what. If it's a Tuesday, and I think Keith said Tuesday in August, or a Tuesday in CES, your rate is going to be fixed to that number. But the main thing, and there's two things. I mean, you're looking at the difference of vehicles too. You know, if you're buying a Cadillac Escalade, it's gonna be $70, $80,000 per vehicle. If you're buying Chevy Equinox, it's gonna be $22,000. I can get four Equinoxes and put them on the road for the price of one Escalade. So the difference between it being a cash business, no oversight. I would say cabs, you have built-in clientele. There's taxicab stands at every hotel or every place, you know. You don't have that for limousines. Limousines are people call you on the phone, charters, stuff like that. So the clientele and the actual supply is, in my opinion, makes the decision to operate a taxicab company rather than to expand at this time.
Okay, and so assuming that you have the bandwidth to run a law firm, a limo company, and a startup taxi company, how long? And there's, there's clearly a lot to it, clearly a lot to it that you're going to learn, that some of the existing carriers are already familiar with and have educated us on today. How long do you anticipate, your calculations? Would it take for the first passenger to be picked up by one of your cabs if you were issued a permit? Okay, because until that happens, you're carrying, you're carrying this business.
It better be fast. I'm gonna tell you that, and it better be under 30 days. Because once I start making those purchases, I'm having payments coming due. Once I start signing a lease, I'm having payments due. I need to get people out there working. So under 30 days would be, I would anticipate having passenger one.
Okay, no more questions. I have no further questions for you.
A few questions, Mr. Carson.
Yes, sir.
How do you? Been following that on, remember Soderberg's question, you issued a CPCN, how are we going to manage the company from day one?
Yeah.
How's the company gonna be managed?
Well, from day one, I would start out as indicated in my application. This would be the first person that came through the door, it would be a leased driver. So beginning with that, getting the certificate, my first step would be obtaining the equipment. That would be my first job as a manager.
Let me, let me be more precise in my question, because we're misunderstanding. Who's gonna go and unlock the door in the morning and run the business? Who's managing this business day in, day out?
As I said before, I think, I would like to think that's going to be me, but there is going to be people under me or with me that'll do that same stuff. So I understand the commitment that it's going to take. I've thought about that since 2019. Whether or not I could handle it, whether or not it would be beneficial. I mean, I've thought about all this, and it's gonna be tough. But I am going to hire people around me that can help me. I always thought that that was the good sign of a business owner. Who do they surround themselves with? If they're gonna make that person better, those are the people that you want around.
Do you have any resumes of any potential management?
Resumes? No. I referenced in my testimony, Tony Boer, who's running the day-to-day operations for Las Vegas Limousines. He wants to, he wants to help. And it's, it seems like the logical step for me, so I'm already working with him. But I have resumes. I had one. Didn't pan out, in my opinion. So, because again, I didn't have, I hope you understand this, and that, as I don't have a lot to offer anybody right now. So if I go and talk to somebody, they're not gonna place all their eggs in my basket on the hopes.
That's not my question, Mr. Carson. Question is, what due diligence have you done about what, how you're gonna manage this company?
Oh, I mean, I've talked to, I mean, obviously, I've been around the industry for a lot. I've talked to my partner, Tony Boer, the day-to-day operations there. I'm very familiar with it. I go there probably once, you know, every twice a week, just to check in and do, see what needs to be going on. But yeah, I'm going, I, the manager's gonna be me. I'm gonna be the one, like you said, opening the door until I get the opportunity, the revenue, everything like that, to hire somebody to help me.
So I, I don't wanna put too fine a point on this, but I'm gonna use an analogy that I have to deal with. If I were giving you a casino license, the answer is, I don't have a key employee in mind yet. You don't have a key employee to help you run that casino as an owner, as an example, by analogy.
I would say Tony Boer as my key employee, as I'm sitting here today in front of you.
What diligence have you completed on a location or physical plant that you need for mechanics, washing the vehicles? Have a list of locations that you have?
I mean, I obviously, I contacted CBRE and stuff like that. I know a guy, Gabe Telus, over there, and, you know, he's telling me, when are you ready to go? When can I get you, you know, because things are moving, coming in and off properties, so markets so fast. I've talked to another transportation company about sharing space, leasing space, stuff like that. I could rent, if worse things come to worse, I can rent a, you know, a parking lot and have the vehicle stored there, and I can use the facilities that are currently owned and operating. I mean, this is a shared expense. This is a win-win for both of my businesses.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Carson. I'll conclude your testimony other than on the pro forma matters in the morning. You can call your next witness unless one of my colleagues needs a break. Ready to power through? Okay, you can call your next witness.
I'll call Brian Bonafant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Bonafant.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Doing well.
I'm reminding you that you took the oath this morning, and you understand that you're under oath under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, sir.
Carson.
Can you please state your name and spell it for the record?
Brian Bonafant, B-R-I-A-N-B-O-N-N-E-N-F-A-N-T.
And Mr. Bonafant, can you tell me your current employment?
Project manager for the Center for Regional Studies at UNR.
Okay, and what, explain to the board what the Center for Studies is.
We do research and analysis within the College of Business at UNR. We're, we're an outreach agency administered by the Nevada Small Business Development Center, which is statewide outreach, along with a cooperative extension. We have offices down here in Vegas. We have ops in Urban Chamber, Henderson, across the state, right, and the rurals. We do, my operation does market studies, feasibility studies, economic impacts, a lot of data gathering, generation, mapping. We have a geographic information system, GIS software, that matches mapping with, with the databases. Scope of clients is, is the full spectrum of economic development, local governments, state governments, entrepreneurs, big business, small business, banks, financials, fintechs, you name it, whoever needs information, data, we provide.
And how long have you been doing that for?
29 years.
So describe, somebody, if somebody came to you like me, said, hey, can you do this for me? Describe how you would do it.
So yours is more of a feasibility analysis, so supply and demand. We look at the supply side and demand side.
And you have a copy of your report?
I do.
Just pull it up real fast. Cover when you're ready?
Right.
Okay. On your report, can you just tell the board the first sentence and the, the scope of your testimony?
This treaty discusses the feasibility of the Las Vegas taxicab industry successfully absorbing a new taxicab company in the post-pandemic Las Vegas economy.
Do you think we're in the post-pandemic economy?
You're in an evolving economy that probably will continue to evolve, like the rest of the state?
Economy moves and goes, right? Flows, ebbs and flows?
Ebbs and flows, so, you know, primarily tracking Clark County leisure and hospitality, right, is your, your big, big driver down here. Recent capital expenditures in your visitor type of establishments, facilities. Had 5,000 rooms last year. You got 11,000 on the books for the next four-plus years. And then the enter into the professional sports industry, $35 billion per year industry, you just started moving into that. You have a lot of growth potential trajectory with that industry as you move forward. The governor's office economic development now is really trying to diversify Clark County economy. Local Reno industrial developer took down Uh, local Reno industrial developer took down ten million, proposed ten million square feet of industrial space, Gene, a five fifteen. Uh, so those are the kind of the economic, big mackerel days we look at, as we're looking at Clark County right now.
Okay. How is it that I came to know you? Have you met me before this?
No.
Okay, you recall how we first made contact?
Yes, we are contacted by Nevada Business Magazine to do the economic forecast every January. And you saw that quote in that twenty-twenty-one January report or magazine.
Okay, what got me is that you were like the only economist in the state. You were dealing with Jeremy Ogwelo, Steppo, all these guys, and not one of them went to say, I think it's going to be a flip of the switch. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you were writing in that respect, I guess.
Yeah.
Do you think the economy?
He's, he's an expert witness, so I think you should be asking questions of him and not testifying.
Okay.
And what do you think the level of leading you're doing is not understanding the rules being lax here is, you're I think.
What did you evaluate in coming to that, uh, light switch statement?
Uh, stimulus payments to the households, all the pent-up demand, the consumer, actual public sentiment of wanting to get out and sort of kind of revolting against the mask. Uh, then the advent of the vaccines and starting to hit to the, the, uh, into public health, the vaccines was going to provide that confidence. We knew the industries, especially leisure hospitality, especially in Las Vegas, were really pushing back on Governor Sisalax's mandates. Uh, so we're just kind of seeing that volcano building of that, um, you know, the consumers go, eventually going to be released into the wild with a lot of money.
COVID happened, and we know it's affected everybody, every person, every business in this room. But let's talk about just real quickly, Las Vegas's economy pre-pandemic.
So Las Vegas, if you look at the yardstick of GDP, it's four-point-two in two thousand and nineteen, five-point-five in two thousand and eighteen, twenty-two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, it averages four percent per year. And the US levels, same time period, were sub-three, sub-twos. So the Vegas economy is just marching very strong, and this was pre-convention expansion, pre-allegiant, you know, pre-circuit virgins, resort worlds, and so it was very strong. And, you know, it was at the back end of that ten, twelve-year economic cycle growth from the financial housing crisis. So, uh, it was really centered, you know, Vegas really, um, profited off of this, the economy pre-pandemic.
And then the shutdown happened, right? Vegas went from top to bottom. Correct?
Correct.
But let's talk about, um, two thousand and twenty-one. That is when things started happening again. Is that correct?
Yeah, again with the vaccines rollout, you know, loosening, uh, spring, summer, you know, we can come outside. You know, Vegas has the weather where you can do that. So it was just a, a natural, what we felt was going to happen was going to happen.
So for this particular project, what data was analyzed?
Well, we always go through all the economic indicators locally, so you know, visitors, uh, conventions, O C rates, uh, AD, you know, uh, the night, uh, right, the rates, hotel rates, passenger traffic. You got I-15 vehicle traffic, overall employment, employed by industries, taxable sales within bars and restaurants, kind of visitation, and the taxable sales accommodation, which is not, uh, you know, the room rates or services. It's the, it's the retail, the taxable, which is the bars, restaurants, and gift store within the casinos and hotels. Uh, the GDPs, and then it's the secondary, kind of something anecdotal that you showed that I provided you were some of those CEO discussions of what their outlook was on, in the Las Vegas economy. We look at, you know, CBA statistics and, and the construction projects moving forward. You know, how many rooms? You look at those, uh, again, the pro sports facilities and all that movement around the, the pro sports with the training camps in Henderson. Uh, now you got, uh, the F-one formula races, maybe A, maybe NBA. Um, and then slightly, you know, looking at some, you know, these new industries again out in Gene and renewables out in Boulder City and, and Perrump. Uh, so we kind of put that all in a basket, just trying to, you know, show what this economy is doing on the demand side.
Can you, you see how your report up?
Yeah.
What, can you just tell quickly the board what factors and indicators you were looking at?
We'll need to mark and proffer that report. We don't have a copy of it. Yeah, that, we don't have a copy of that.
Okay, I was gonna. If he's just gonna testify to it, I don't think the board necessarily needs to see the report.
Well, he's, I thought he was just getting ready to show us.
No, no.
I thought you said, I thought, I'm, my, my mistake. I thought you were asking him to show us.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to explain to the board the, the indicators he looked at for preparing, for preparing this report.
Uh, yeah, so it was again, gaming revenue, hotel O C, O C rates, visitor volumes, airport volumes, tax sales, I-15 traffic, employment, um, and then the qualitative of the trade shows, conventions, and, um, EDC, you know, Speedway, Life is Beautiful, all those, the event side, and then the resort side, Circuit Bridge Resort World, buffets reopening, uh, parking returning to cafes. Those were the things we threw it in on this into the document.
Okay, so this report was prepared in two thousand and twenty-one, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, and you testified that the economy is cyclical? Moves, it moves?
Yes.
Okay. Have you looked at the current economic indicators that were used in performing your report?
Yes, yeah, we always update these as part of our work, so.
And based, based upon the current indicators, does it change your opinions as to your original feasibility study?
No, no, it just increased the opinion that of strong demand.
And you mentioned, um, you said what's coming in the future and all the stuff that projected growth. We were just, just say, let's not consider that. Standing here today without the NBA, without the baseball, all that, is, is the market able to absorb thirty-five additional medallions?
We would have to say yes, based on the stagnation of, of the medallions in the market since two thousand and sixteen. You've had this, uh, six years of growth in demand. And you see that, um, in some of the supply side, picking it up with the TNC. So currently, yes, the demand there.
What other, oh, so you look at the economic indicators, but you also look at some qualitative tourism indicators? What are those?
Uh, qualitative is just, again, you know, back to, you know, what's, what we're seeing down, what they call the pipeline, you know, what, what's happening outside, within, with that, and outside of leisure hospitality, again, with, uh, you know, visitation is also business, uh, visits. Uh, you got the conventions, uh, they gotta pick up international travelers, uh, it's still gonna, you know, that's still a, a pipeline that has to improve. Uh, so we look outside of some of these core indicators and always have an eye out on the qualitative or the, uh, stuff that's happening that's not have quantitative numbers.
Okay. You heard, you were sitting through my cross-examination, right?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Traptan asked me a question about GDP versus is it supply?
Yeah, there was a tortured comparison, one percent, thirty-five medallions and thirty-five hundred medallions versus the six percent or whatever the value was used. Uh, that was, came from a, just a, a broad perspective of that your, your supply side has not grown, and now you're proposing one percent growth over six years. Whereas if you look at the GDP, you're growing at four percent, the economy's growing at four percent per year. So you see this economic movement per year, but a stagnation on the supply side. And that's all that one versus five percent was. It's, it's that one percent of the proposed medallion versus four percent of your annual GDP growth.
And you didn't do like an impact study or something like that, right?
Well, we didn't do any due diligence to get the rates or the, or what, how many medallions should be put on the table based on the demand? And you know, uh, medallions per demand, uh, that takes a lot more information that we, we didn't have or have access to. Uh, that's really would be, uh, you know, that due diligence level of analysis, uh, that would take quite a bit, a lot more work and information.
And this is what you do for a living, but every day is data.
Yeah, yeah.
And you've mentioned, uh, your employee or, uh, people that have employed you, present and past, include municipalities?
Correct.
Uh, banks?
Yes.
Have you ever done anything in transportation?
Uh, we helped a limousine company years ago in Reno, uh, come up and, and are down here to get, uh, her certificate or, or additional car or something like that. Outside of that, I think that's only transportation-specific analysis we've done.
So you never done, didn't do anything ever for the taxi cab industry?
No.
No. Um, have you, were you ever asked to do anything like that from taxi cab industry?
No.
If they would have asked that, is it something that you could have done?
Judging form, all speculation, if they would ask.
I'm gonna allow, he's, he's asking, is, I'm, I take that to be?
Has anybody asked?
Okay.
No.
Is that something you could have done?
Yes.
Righted? Correct information was given?
Correct.
Okay, but for the purposes of this report and the, you use your word, this treatise, you were basically asked, because COVID disrupted everybody's lives. We were asking, I asked you, what would be the feasibility of the absorption of a new taxi cab company, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what was your conclusion?
Uh, based on the, the demand side of such strong growth and the demand, we concluded that there is opportunity for another cab company in the market.
A new cab company in the market, can they absorb, let's cut to, can this industry right now absorb thirty-five additional medallions?
I don't know, Jack, this is beyond the scope of what his assignment was based upon his deposition's testimony.
Really? No, because we already went through this with, uh, hearing officer Cassidy.
Counsel, I, he's giving testimony today that he gave a different set of testimony. You can cross-examine him if you want, but he can testify.
Again, we didn't do the due diligence phase of the number of medallions that, that, that this could, could absorb. But based on overall, again, stagnation of no new medallions at six years, uh, the growth in the TNC side, which is part of the market, uh, private, uh, vehicle transportation, we feel there's, there's absolutely opportunity for a new cab company.
And in more, in particular, I think your last line here in support of this application?
Yes.
For thirty-five cars? Yeah, um, let me ask you this. Did I pressure you or bias you into coming to any of your opinions?
No.
If your study would have came out that the market's already oversaturated, would you have told me that?
Yes.
Would you have told the industry that too? You just bait, you know, I'm not buying your testimony, in a way.
No.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Sorry, we're a little cramped here.
No worries.
Okay. So during your direct testimony just now, you discussed, um, the economy pre-pandemic, correct? Yes?
Yes, well, the GDP, yeah.
Yeah. And you talked a little bit about the Las Vegas recovery from shutdown until the present, right?
Correct.
Um, and for this case, you researched some economic data and analyzed that economic data, correct?
Yes.
And you drew some conclusions, right? You talked about, uh, the current economic indicators, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and you offered opinions regarding the demand for taxi cabs in Las Vegas and what you expect from the future from an economic standpoint, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, you've never been qualified or designated as an economic witness by any court or administrative body, have you?
Uh, yes.
Uh, which court?
Washoe County.
I asked you the same question in your deposition and you told me you hadn't. So was it recently?
No, we discussed it and was the Peta Pit.
Let me, uh, let me see here.
Peta Pit? And then my office was involved with the NDOT.
All right, let me, let me just read you the question when I took your deposition. You remember I took your deposition, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and it was February fifteenth of this year?
Yes.
So my question, I'll read it to you, I can show it to you if you'd like. Have you ever been qualified as an expert witness by a court or administrative body as an economic expert? Your answer, no.
Not personally, but our office was.
Okay, so my question is to you personally, so no personally, okay. And you attended college at Cal State Chico?
Correct.
And obtained a Bachelor of Science in Geology?
Correct.
Right? And that's the study of the earth, its physical structure, rocks, et cetera. Right?
Sure.
Okay, and then you obtained a master's degree in geological engineering from UNR in nineteen ninety-six, right?
Correct.
And that geological engineering has to do with the development and conservation of natural resources. Is that right?
Uh, no, it's more of slope stability, uh, mining, estimating ore bodies.
Okay, all right, you did not have any degrees in economics, correct?
Correct.
All right. Um, in fact, the, the extent of your education consists of taking a economic geology course during your undergrad studies and auditing two classes at UNR some point around nineteen ninety-nine, so you could learn how to use some software programs. Is that right?
Yes.
And regarding public transportation, um, when I asked you at your deposition, um, if you'd ever studied public transportation, you told me you took one class over a weekend in nineteen ninety-nine, where you learned how to use a census software program that is now called onthemap.com.
Correct.
Okay. Onthemap.com is a web, uh, web-based mapping and reporting application that shows where workers are employed and where they live, right?
Correct.
You believe, uh, you believe that this weekend course you took on how to use onthemap.com educated you as to public education, or I'm sorry, public transportation, right?
Commuting.
Commuting, all right. Um, and that's the extent of your education regarding public transportation, correct?
Plus twenty-nine years of working with the data.
Understood, that's your work, but as far as your education, right?
You have to educate yourself while you're doing the, the analysis.
Okay. Um, you've never given any speeches or talks regarding public transportations in Southern Nevada, correct? Is that right?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. You've never published anything regarding the transportation industry in Southern Nevada, correct?
Correct.
You've never offered any of your opinions regarding the issuance or non-issuance of taxi cab medallions, is that correct?
Correct.
You, in fact, as of now, you don't know how many medallions are currently not in use by the existing certificate holders, do you?
We asked and yeah, it was not provided.
Okay, so the answer is no, you don't know?
I do not know, correct.
All right. And you do not know what the cab, taxi cab demand looks like in Las Vegas on weekends versus weekdays, do you?
I would associate it with your O C rates.
But as you sit here today, you do not know the answer to that question, do you?
No.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Bob Winter, we met before. Yeah, you didn't know what the cab demand on weekends versus weekdays. You don't know that, you didn't know at your deposition, right?
Correct.
And you didn't seek that out, you didn't learn that information, did you?
Uh, yes, we did.
And did you give this answer on page sixty-four, line fourteen, when you were under oath, right? Last February?
Yep.
Ask you about the cab demand weekends versus weekdays, you know what it is? No. Have you sought that out?
No.
Is that your testimony in February?
Yes, but.
Well, do you know that there are Nevada statutes governing operations taxes in Nevada, right?
Yes.
You didn't seek that out, did you?
No.
I asked you why, it's because the premise of the study is rate a recovery. That was it, right?
The premise of the study?
These are your words, I'm on page sixty-five now, if you got it. I asked you why you didn't seek out this information, I said, why not? Your answer, page two, line sixty-five, or sixty-five, line two. The premise of the study was to rate a recovery. See that? That's what you said, didn't you?
If it's on there, that's what I said, yes.
Okay, you're not arguing with it, you just don't remember?
Well, it's a lot of confuse, confusion in there at the time.
You think you were confused or me?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. And that was it, your whole study was to rate a recovery. So you don't have any opinions or testimony about what benefits this application might provide the traveling public?
Again, I was confused during that deposition of the premise of the study was, when I was asked by the client, was to, was about the rate of recovery.
And that was it.
Well, within you, the document I provided before the deposition to the client, in the first paragraph, it discusses the, the premise of the study. It's your room for a new taxi cab company. That's in the document by the client before the deposition. That's a premise of the study.
Okay. So when you were confused when you answered that you don't have any testimony or opinions about the benefits of this application cab company to the traveling public, when you said, no, I have no opinions.
That's an economic impact. We were, we're not hired to do an economic impact, the benefit of the medallion.
Okay. The impact this application may have on other carriers, cabs, limos, do you have any opinions on that?
No, that's an economic impact study. None of that lessens the demand side.
Impact this application may have on other carriers, cabs, limos, you don't have any opinions, no. The need for more medallions, you have no opinions on that? I'll read your answer if you want. Again, back to the scope of the work for this study, it not involve analyzing competition, right, or need, correct? So these are all the opinions we'll be offering for this cab company, correct? You, you tried to testify truthfully, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, did I hear you correctly? Some of Mr. Carson's final questions, that you could have done a study of impact and all the medallions, whether this is a good idea or not, you could have done that.
Yeah.
If somebody asked for it.
Yeah, if I was provided the information, yeah.
Okay, well, the guy sitting next to you, Mr. Carson, he could have asked you, right? He has the burden of proof in this case.
He asked me to supply and demand, he's a bill.
That's all he asked?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Just briefly, did you perform any analysis on taxi ridership comparing like twenty twenty-one to twenty eighteen?
I have the data, yes, I looked at it, yes.
All right, did you perform any analysis on?
Just the, the growth percentages.
All right. Is twenty twenty-one above or below twenty eighteen as far as the number of trips?
I believe it's below.
All right, when did you do that?
I did it in twenty twenty-one and then relooked at it last couple of weeks.
When I asked you back in your deposition, I asked if you perform an analysis on taxi ridership from twenty twenty-one and compare it to twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, you remember what your answer was?
Excuse me?
Do you remember what your answer was?
Probably.
The answer was no.
Okay.
And then he also, I asked you, are you, you're not opining on the thirty-five, how many thirty-five medallions will impact Las Vegas market, you said no. Or how adding in another taxi company to the Las Vegas market will impact the taxi cab industry? And you said, quote, not in the scope of work for the June report. By the June report, that's for the report that you were referencing or?
Correct.
So when you say there was a feasibility study, it was really a feasibility study as to how fast Vegas would return?
Again, demand versus supply with the thirty-five eighty medallions. How much demand would if, if that could absorb thirty-five medallion?
Did you do any evaluation on how the T N Cs would impact the taxi industry?
I know, that's an internal operation struggle, that's not part of these, the supply or demand side. I mean, that's within the supply side. If there's opportunity for T N Cs, why isn't there an opportunity for a new cab company? Kind of, that's how we look at it.
So you, you basically consider a T N C and taxi company to do the same thing?
Correct.
All right, your words, N R S chapter seven oh six A?
No.
That's, the T N Cs have their own statutory scheme. That's completely set apart and different from the statutory scheme governing taxi cabs. You understand?
No.
I have no question.
Person you want to read?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gibson and Mr. Winter just read testimony, correct, to you?
Yes.
Okay, so we know they can read.
Yes.
Your report, what does the first line say, the, the impact studies, what this is for?
I'll check, this is beyond the scope across, we never talked about.
Well, in administrative law, I can ask questions, it doesn't matter if it's beyond the scope.
There's no scope.
There's no scope.
Limitation under the.
Discuss its feasibility, Las Vegas taxi cab industry successfully absorbing a new taxi cab company in the post-pandemic Las Vegas economy.
Okay, so you looked at whether the taxi cab industry could successfully absorb a new taxi cab company in the post-pandemic Las Vegas economy.
Correct.
You heard all their words, legalese, need, demand, or whatever like that. Is that the summary of this treatise?
Yes.
Okay, again, you know that they can read, turn to the very last page. Why don't you read that for the board?
If he has a question that doesn't call for an air.
No, I'm asking him to read his opinions.
Kind of hearsay, isn't it?
No, hearsay, he's sitting right here.
Well, what, ask him then, instead of saying, read the document.
Read the document.
Okay, I'll get to the point.
Good. And Mr. Carson, will you? What are your overall conclusions? I want a little bit of foundation, that's what I, so what, what do we, what are you asking him?
Okay.
To, to read so that we have some idea.
I understand.
Of the context. My understanding is that your, the reason for your hiring was to discuss the feasibility absorbing a taxi cab industry in the post-pandemic Las Vegas economy, right?
Yes.
And based upon all of your research, what is the conclusion that you gave? And if you need to read it, go ahead.
Based on my conclusion of Las Vegas economic recovery and economic future and the relatively minor amount of medallions requested by independent cab company, please consider my full support for the, for the authority to grant independent cab company a taxi cab license in Clark County.
That the demand for safe, reliable, regulated transportation in Southern Nevada is on the increase and will continue to increase over the year.
Are you testifying now, sir?
I've just read, is that what?
Yes, yeah, I skipped over that sentence.
So, please read that statement.
After reviewing primary and anecdotal economic data, is my professional opinion that demand for safe, reliable and regulated transportation in Southern Nevada is on the increase and will continue to increase over the year.
And when you said it's on the increase, that was in June of twenty twenty-one?
Correct.
And now we're in August of twenty twenty-two. Has anything changed your opinion?
No.
Thank you, no more questions. Request.
None of your opinions relate to the statutory requirements in N R S seven oh six point eight eight two seven, correct?
Objection.
And none of them.
There's no scope.
I thought you just, no, I'm just saying, if, beyond what he's gonna testify, I mean, if you're gonna say which statute?
Mr. Carson, I will, you may ask the question, you may answer, go ahead and restate.
Okay, none of your opinions pertain to the requirements the applicant must satisfy pursuant to N R S seven oh six point eight eight two seven, correct?
Correct.
And none of your opinions pertain to the requirements the applicant must satisfy pursuant to N A C seven oh six point four five three, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Nothing further.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anybody need?
Do we have an opportunity to question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're not excused.
Yeah.
You were so close.
The resort.
But Mr. Decker has, has grabbed victory from defeat.
And then, yes, I will need a break.
You're not getting it.
I'll, I'll be quick. Were, were you, were you here when Commissioner Sager Bloom testified?
Yeah.
So you heard his testimony? So he essentially said, market exists, the need is there, no detriment to existing cab companies. Is that consistent with your economic position?
Uh, yeah.
Analysis, it is. Okay, so did you hear Mr. Winter respond to Commissioner Sager Bloom in response to those three points that he made, that the industry needs more cabs, not more cab companies?
Drive.
Well, I don't know what he meant, but did you hear him say that?
Yes.
So the, when he, when he concedes to the witness that the marketplace needs more cabs in, in, in itself, the first part of that, is that consistent with your economic analysis of the marketplace?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the question.
I have no questions.
You can. You are now.
Great, thank you.
And you need a break.
I, I, I'm just, no, I'm fine, I'll take a second, but, I mean, if we could take five, it'd be awesome.
We will be back on the record at four oh five.